Address it was some weird thing.
Yeah, so I just ignored it. Who's that guy sitting there? The guy right there?
Yeah.
He comes to almost every meeting now. Oh, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this regular city council meeting of the City of Richfield. It's March 12th, 2024, and at 7:00 PM. If you are able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the open forum. I have three people that have filled out registration cards that would like to speak. If there's anyone else who needs to fill, would like to fill one out, you can get one from management analyst Swanson, who's in the audience. If you want to call in, you can call in to open forum by dialing 1-415-655-0001. And you can see on the screen that the meeting ID is 2631-053-8891, and the password is 1234. If you're here to comment tonight, please keep your comments to three minutes. We'll call people up one at a time. You can identify yourself and sign in, and then I'll start the timer. So it doesn't look like we have anybody online. And also, there's a public hearing later on the city charter, so if you want to speak to the public hearing, that's a separate matter. This is just for the open forum. So first person I have on my list is Kathleen Ballaban, so if you want to come up? There is a public hearing on the... If you want to wait for the public hearing, you can, or you can speak now. It's up to you.
Just the charter most. I apologize. All this time, I thought we were a mayor council. City ruled, home ruled, okay? But I found out recently that all this time I was in error, that we're really a council manager, city ruled. Just for your information, I'm going to round it by a couple cities, but there's 845, 47 cities in the state of Minnesota. 170 of them are home ruled, and of that, only 30 are city manager ruled. Only 30, and primarily rural. Well, we were rural at one time, but we're not anymore. So with that said, I, again, I apologize for coming to you with issues when, in fact, we should be coming to our city manager. One of the things that caught my ear was two weeks ago when I was at the workshop for the compensation issue, compensation, yeah, it is an issue, but at the same time, some remedies for what we have. But I heard from the city manager telling our city council that two months into the year, because this was in February, that we were already over budget as a city. I find that hard to comprehend, whether it was just on the comprehension, excuse me, compensation aspect of the budget or anywhere else in the city. But none, one of you mentioned anything about that. Could you explain that to me? Could you tell me why we're already over budget in the first 60 days of the year? I'm asking you because I did a little research that the way we are ruled is you have only policy and legislature authority. And in the city charter, you're going to change the one and only place where we have a will to a may, and that is to manage the city's performance to some extent. I would like to see different policies written by you, because I saw them in the 2040 plan, because I went looking for policies. And the only ones there are on land, housing, transportation, and those skills that our city manager brought to the table along with funding. Nowhere does it say, "Our policy is to put procedures in place for all the functions in our city." I don't see anywhere that there's administration coming from you. You. Everything is coming from the city. And I brought, and I forgot it in the car or wherever, but it's the 2040 comp plan with the goals and policies on it, as well as, I forget what else I had in there. But one thing I'm asking you to do is I'm asking you to really look at our policies. And I'll be bringing it to you in an email form. And at the same time, are we really, really, is it really appropriate for us as an urban city to be ruled in a rural manner? Then I'm asking you to rethink our charter and what we need in this day and age. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we had Rod Sather.
Hi, I'm Rod Sather, and I'd like to speak a little bit about neighborhoods and what's going on. I know the City of Richfield doesn't have a policy about Airbnbs and vacation rental by owners. The neighborhoods are changing when you bring in companies and corporations that are operating businesses in residential neighborhoods. So I'd just like to say that when we have a residential neighborhood, we see people walking, walking dogs, pushing strollers, riding bikes. When you have something like Airbnb in there, you're probably going to see more traffic, people coming and going. So I'd like the city council to consider implementing some measures and rules on Airbnbs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Larry Ernstur.
Hi, Larry Ernstur, 6727 Elliott Avenue South. I also attended the workshop on the new salary plan. And I'm concerned that, you know, proposals are to increase staff salaries from $300,000 to $500,000, not including benefits and taxes and payroll taxes. And we homeowners pay the majority of the property taxes in the city. And I don't think us homeowners are willing to support increasing salaries by hundreds of thousand dollars because of past mismanagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom and Joanne Warra.
Hi, I'm Tom Warra, 7024 Irving Avenue South. I'm here to talk about the closure of the Hennepin County Refuge burning site downtown Minneapolis. And let's do it close in a couple years or whatever. We noticed on the news a couple of months ago, the City of Bloomington mayor took a stand on saying that we need to rethink that before we close that. And I was wondering if the city would consider, our city, unless I saw it and didn't, or it happened and I didn't see it, but I'd like Richfield to take a stand on that if that's possible, and support the idea of trying to figure out a remedy before closing a solution. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Has anyone signed in online?
No, there has not.
All right. At this point, then, we'll close out the open forum, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the Joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting of February 26, 2024, the City Council Work Session of February 28th, 2024, and the City Council Meeting of February 28th, 2024. And I probably failed to mention, we will get back to the people that have responded, so we don't respond here tonight. So I just wanted to know that we did hear all your comments, and thank you. So the format will be to reach out to you afterwards. All right, so now, moving on to the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the three sets of minutes. Are there any comments or questions? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, we've approved the minutes. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
I'd move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any comments or questions or changes? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the agenda. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar, and I'll turn it over to city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider approval of a temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for the Richfield Foundation's A Toast to Richfield event to take place on Thursday, May 9th, 2024, in the atrium area of Woodlake Center located at 6601 Wendell Avenue South. Item B, consider the acceptance of the quotation from Commercial Recreation Specialists for $537,556 to construct a splash pad at the Richfield Outdoor Pool and authorize the Recreation Services Director to proceed with the project. Item C, consider the approval of the new foundational Public Health Responsibilities Agreement with the City of Bloomington. Item D, consider the approval of the Response Sustainability Agreement with the City of Bloomington. And item E, consider adoption of a resolution to accept a Safe Routes to School Design Assistance Grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the consent calendar items, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we have approved them. Next, we will move on to our public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to council member Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a public hearing relating to a second reading and summary publication of an ordinance amending the current city charter based on the Charter Commission's recommendations. It's considered best practices to periodically review the charter to ensure the document is still relevant and functional. Beginning in 2022, the Richfield Charter Commission began a review of the current charter, which, for folks who aren't familiar, that's like our city's constitution. Staff worked with the commission to identify areas where the charter could be updated to bring in line with state statute and best practices. There are also several general grammar and spelling changes that staff updated during this process. The commission has identified and recommends amendments to the current charter. These simplify and clarify language, clarify the councils' and mayor's authority in times of emergency, add consistency with state law, expand the council's authority to approve public purpose expenditures, and update the document to reflect current community conditions. City attorney drafted the proposed amendments consistent with the commission direction and feedback. The recommended amendments are included in the attached documents, the full council packet. After many meetings over the course of many months or even years, the Charter Commission formally acted on December 5th, 2023, to recommend the amendments for adoption by the city council. The Charter Commission sent a letter to the Richfield Council transmitting the proposed amendments to the Richfield City Charter to the council. Council accepted the commission's recommendation and authorized publication of a notice of public hearing at its meeting on February 13th. The proposed amendments are being forwarded for consideration for adoption by ordinance pursuant to Minnesota Statutes Section 410.12 subdivision 7. Council approved the first reading of the ordinance amending the charter at its meeting on February 28th, 2024. Tonight, we will be holding the required public hearing on the proposed ordinance amending the charter. If unanimously approved, this ordinance will become effective 90 days following its passage and legal publication. Within 60 days after passage and publication of the ordinance, voters may submit a petition with the city clerk requesting a referendum on the ordinance. The petition must be signed by registered voters equal a number to at least 5% of the registered voters in the city, or 2,000, whichever is less. If voters file a proper petition, the ordinance does not become effective until it's approved by the voters. Council may submit the ordinance at a general or special election that occurs within 60 days after filing of the petition, or it may reconsider its action in adopting the ordinance. I believe staff has something to add on this item?
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. The recommended changes before you tonight have been many years in the making. We had our first meeting, actually, back in 2019, and then we had to pause because of COVID. We restarted the conversation with the Charter Commission in 2022. The commission is a 15-member commission, and it is appointed by the Hennepin County Chief Judge. It's all Richfield residents. The recommended changes have been carefully reviewed by the commission. They have met six times, and the council has considered the proposed changes at three work sessions and then the past two council meetings. This has been a long and careful process, as is appropriate for such an important document, as Councilmember Wayland said, our local constitution. The recommended changes have already been summarized. I do want to clarify that there is no recommendation to change the city's current form of organization. Richfield is a council manager form of government, and it has been since 1964. I do want to thank city attorney Techen and management analyst Chris Swanson for leading this work for staff. I also want to thank the Charter Commission and city council for their thoughtful and careful approach to this update. And we're available for any questions. City Attorney Techen, do you have anything more?
City manager Rodriguez summed it up very well, so I really have nothing to add, just, but only to say, to congratulate you on getting this far in the process, that both the commission and the council had some very thoughtful, intentional discussions about these proposed amendments, and I think it was a very good, thorough, public, transparent process, and I think you should all be proud of that.
Thank you, city manager Rodriguez and city attorney Techen. With that, I believe we will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak for this public hearing? I believe that's, yeah.
I believe so. Do we want to give the phone number if someone wants to call in?
Oh, yes.
It is 1-415-655-0001. And the webinar access code is 2631-053-8891, and the password is 1234. So if we could leave that on the screen for a minute in case somebody wants to call in, and then turn it back over to council member Wayland.
Yes, if you would like to speak again, you are welcome.
Kathleen Ballaban, 65th and Stevens. What I would like to comment on is, is a comment that came, and I didn't find it transparent. I went looking for the charter. I missed how we were ruled, okay? But I did go look for the documentation, the conversations, the information that supported this decision. It's not there. It's not there. So again, policy and legislature, please, let's look at our communication to the citizens, okay? You might have workshops, and you might tell yourselves things, but I don't find it. We don't find it. So please, keep us in mind. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the public hearing? Appears we do not have anyone calling in. Well, then, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed.
Then I would make a motion to approve a second reading of an ordinance amending the current city charter based on the Charter Commission's recommendations, and approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hefner Leary.
Yeah, I will just say, I plan to support this. I think it was a useful cleanup, and I actually want to directly thank Ms. Ballaban, as the only person who spoke twice about this issue. I appreciate the feedback about the former government, but I guess I just want to emphasize that the scope of these changes is much more minor. And in fact, I might even feel uncomfortable using this process with a major change, like restructuring the role of the mayor or city manager. But with the changes that we have done, I think this makes a lot of sense. It's a reasonable update, and it makes the document more relevant. And I really appreciate the fact that we had to, you know, talk through unlikely scenarios and exactly how this plays out to sort of test this document and make sure it makes sense for the City of Richfield. So I think it makes a lot of sense, and I will support it.
All right, other comments or questions? I would like to thank all the members of the Charter Commission, and I know there was a lot of discussion and spent a number of people, and some of them are still on the Charter Commission, some were on it before and have since turned off, but I, they put a lot of work and discussion into it. And, you know, you, Councilmember Hefner Leary, mentioned that you might discuss a theoretical situation, but one of the big things we had the big discussion on is what happens in a time of emergency. And this actually came up in one of our neighboring cities in the metro during the civil unrest, where it was, I guess, standard practice in all the charters to say the mayor can take over the police department. And someone actually invoked that, and a mayor took over the police department. And so that was pretty controversial, and it ended up being an election issue and determined whether or not, you know, it was, it was a whole big discussion in the community during the election afterwards, whether that was an appropriate thing to do. So that was part of the discussion of what happens in an emergency, and what are the powers of the mayor, and what are the powers of the staff and the emergency coordinator and those types of things. So we think that a lot of this is theoretical, but it does actually happen, and it was a very real-life situation that came up and was on the news a great deal. And I do also want to thank Kathleen for commenting on everything. I appreciate the fact that you've, you hold us accountable and ask lots of good questions. I agree with you, the charter is very important, the comp plan is very important, and also I think the strategic plan is very important, and all of those things are things that we should be discussing, and we should be getting input, and we should have lots of discussions about. So thank you for everyone who's been involved, and everybody who's been asking questions and getting involved in things. Are there any other questions or comments that anyone wants to make? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I wanted to add just how much I appreciated about the process, that folks on the Charter Commission had a true diversity of opinions and political backgrounds, and there wasn't unanimous consent, but unanimous consent was achieved. And I just think that's such a powerful thing in 2024, to say that people with different points of view can represent the places that they're elected and they're appointed to represent, and have vigorous conversations, and reach a decision point, and move forward with goodwill. So people disagreeing in goodwill, and people reaching compromises, and people really listening to each other, and now, so it's, it's the fruit of a lot of years and a lot of persistent effort and a lot of dialogue, and I think it landed in a good place. And it just, even though a lot of the changes were administrative, we did have an opportunity to reflect on how emergency powers were used as we've had an opportunity, you know, that we haven't had in a generation, to see how emergency powers worked. So I think it was timely to begin that process, to pause that process, to reflect on how our charter works, and I'm really pleased to support this proposed amendment.
All right, are there any other discussions? Again, thank you to everybody that was involved in the process. All in favor, we've got two parts to this, the approval of the second reading of the ordinance, and also the approval of authorizing the summary publication. So all in favor of those two parts to the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed? And let it be noted that it was a unanimous vote. I believe that's required. All right, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 5, and I'll turn that over to councilmember Hefner Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider appointment to fill a vacancy in the Transportation Commission. Terms of several city advisory boards and commissions expired on January 31st, 2024, and those terms are for three years. The city council directs the city manager's office to conduct an annual recruitment seeking applicants to fill the vacancies. This recruitment includes a press release and information on the city's website and social media. Applicants were interviewed at a work session held on November 11th, 2023. However, the Transportation Commission had an unexpected resignation after all the positions were filled. In the recruitment process, three applicants were designated as alternates as there were not enough open positions. An email was sent to all alternates with only one replying with interest to join the Transportation Commission. The applicant was then reviewed by city council. And I will just add, the applicant also had a phone call with me personally. I've been the liaison to the Transportation Commission, and I was impressed with her eagerness and interest in this, in this topic. So I will move that we approve appointment of Stacy Fuentes as Transportation Commissioner commencing on March 13th, 2024, and expiring January 31st, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we have approved Ms. Fuentes. Next, we're going to move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, we had two speakers during the open forum, and I addressed the issues that Kathleen Ballaban brought up during your discussion about the Charter Commission. And then Deb Nornmarkin's comments did not, she did not ask a specific question, but she has since followed up with some emails and asking for information, and so we're working with her and getting that information. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. And next, we'll move on to claims and payroll.
I would move claims and payroll.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Are there any questions or comments? All right, all in favor of approving claims and payroll, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've approved claims and payroll. Next, we'll move on to hats off to hometown hits, and we'll start with councilmember Troutman.
Thank you. It's going to take me just a moment here. I just came from our Empty Bowls event that the Richfield High School put on, and I just wanted to open these up. The, our art students at Richfield High School have a pottery class, and they make pottery, and they sell their pottery to raise money for the food shelf that's available to families here in Richfield, which is just a great project, and also just a sobering reminder that people in our, our community have, have needs. And I'm glad that, that we in our schools can help meet those needs, but I'm just really proud of our, of our students for taking initiative and industry and, and making, making this challenge known and seen and raising money for folks in our community. So hats off to our Richfield High School and our high school students, and so that's one of the, one of the cups, and this is an incredible, incredible pottery bowl that, that they made. So hats off.
Thank you. Councilmember Hefner Leary.
I have no items tonight.
All right, councilmember Christiansen.
Yes, the other evening, I had the opportunity to stop at one of the, another one of the small businesses here in Richfield, the restaurant called Tzah. small businesses here in Richfield, the restaurant called Tzah. It is a Mediterranean restaurant on 66th Street near Penn Avenue. And it's, it was quite busy that night, but I had my food for takeout. And what it was interesting, when I was speaking with, speaking with the owner, Nishwa, she said that I asked what tza meant, and she said "fresh." All of their food that they have there is made fresh, nothing is processed, they make it to order. And so it took about 15, 20, 20 minutes for me to get my food, but it was well worth it. So it's a great place to stop in for a meal.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland.
Two items tonight. One, just wanted to thank the Cub Scout Den that joined us before our work session today. They were coming to learn about civic engagement, gave some input about their, their views on our, our parks and our amenities in town and asked some good questions. So thanks to them for coming. And then also wanted to say a big thank you to our city clerk, Leslie, and everyone who had a hand in the presidential primary process. Always good to see people getting to make their voices heard and be part of our democracy.
All right, thank you. I'm going to do a hats off to both ARDAP and our Public Works Department. ARDAP is the Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership, and they hosted a forum at the school district office this last, about a week ago. And it was a forum for people from the community to come and share their concerns and things that they wanted to talk about. And there were a bunch of people that were concerned about things that had to do with Safe Routes to School. And it was interesting because they were talking about concerns about something that was happening at Sheridan Hills or something that was happening at the middle school. And then I went the next day and opened up the council packet, and in our consent agenda was the resolution to accept the Safe Routes to School Design Assistance Grant. And two out of the three sites were the ones that they brought up as community concerns of things that need to be fixed. So it's interesting that that rose up and was mentioned at a community thing, and then it was also being part of trying to figure out how to solve it. So it was kind of fun to see that kind of nexus of events coming together. And it was great hearing from the community members, and they talked, Senator Wicklund, Representative Howard, County Commissioner Gotel, and myself were there. And so they were talking about things at all different levels of government and things that needed to be concerned, we need to be concerned about. And it was really interesting because a number of them ended up being in the news later because they were talking about issues of programs where you like get lift cards for people to help get them to their doctor's appointments and some of the things to make that work out. And then there was a big discussion about lift going on in the community. So it was very, very appropriate and very timely. I also want to do a thank you and a shout out to County Attorney Mary Moriarty. She asked Richfield to host a session for Hennepin County mayors to talk about public safety, and there were discussions of things like fentanyl and what we're going to do in response to that crisis, ways we can get services to youth when they first start getting into trouble so that it doesn't get to a point where it's very serious. And she talked about some of the programs they put in place where I believe it was like 88% of the kids that got involved in the program then never had any more contact with public safety. And so it was really good to hear about some of those things and to have the discussion amongst all the mayors. And so thank you to Management Analyst Swanson for helping set that up, and to the County Attorney's Office and County Attorney Mary Moriarty for joining us here in Richfield. Is there anything else that anyone would like to add? All right, then we stand adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to do a motion. So is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourned the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we stand adjourned.